I'd like to call this meeting to an end. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin tonight with a quick recognition, but before we do that, I'd like to begin with a quick recognition. As an educator, I get to sit in the beginning of the year and not watch superintendents give certificates and awards to people for all the years that they put in service and their time in service. And I get the honor tonight to sit here and give a 25-year service award to our superintendent, Mr. Scott Neef, who has spent his career here dedicated to our town and the students of this town. And I am very proud, and I think I can speak for the committee, saying that is an honor to have him here and to give him the certificate and to thank him for all those years of service.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
So I'd just like to thank the members of the committee and everybody. I truly have enjoyed my time here in the Carver Public Schools. My goal is to stay here through retirement. That's my goal. Hopefully, everybody's willing to keep me. It's been a great experience. There's great families, great students, and great teachers. So I'm really a blessed person. I've had the opportunity to work in this district in so many ways, as a teacher, as a coach, and as an administrator. So I'd like to thank the Carver community for sharing themselves with me over the past 25 years.
It's definitely our benefit.
So going on to our next recognition, we had several Carver families participate in hosting five 4th and 5th grade students from Lima, Peru this past week. And we've invited the families here to share a little bit of their experience. And we've also invited Ruby Maestis, who was the coordinator of the experience, to talk about it and share a little bit. I just want to quickly recognize the families and who's here this evening, and then I'll invite Mrs. Maestis up. And I don't know if we can have all the families up to the mic, but we can certainly incorporate people, and we just want to recognize what they did and the experiences that they had. So we have the Duffys. We have Jenna and Mike Duffy and Abigail and Madeline. I see them there here in the audience. The Blackwells, Tim and Andrea, with their kids Nolan, Nathan, and Nia. The Gingrich family, I see Jaclyn and Connor, I believe, is here with us tonight. We also want to recognize Terry Sexton. Terry's not here this evening, but her family also took a student in. And then the Ryan family, Dagmar and Dan Ryan, who also took in one of the families and worked with them over the past week. And they actually, Dagmar and Dan currently don't have any students in the district. They don't have a 4th or 5th grader. But one of their neighbors do, the Nelsons. So Jack Nelson and the Nelson family spent a lot of time. They kind of shared the experiences with the Ryans. The Nelsons were unable to be here this evening, but I did want to recognize them. So I just want to thank the families for taking in these families from Peru. I'm sure it was a unique experience, and I'm sure that there was some great benefits from it, but it had to be a little bit nervous, a little scary, just to bring in a family that you don't know, that you've had no connection with, and have them really live with you for a weekend and immerse them in Carver, immerse them in the United States, immerse them in Massachusetts, and probably in the end, hopefully you got as much out of it as they did. But I want to personally thank you for taking on that challenge, because I think it was really a benefit for all. So this time, I invite Ruby up, and then Ruby, I don't know exactly, Ruby's going to give us kind of an overview of the experience, what they did, and then we can ask some of the families to share a little bit about the experience as well.
Good evening. So I thought that the best way to do it would be to start with a little video. We have hundreds of photos, thanks to all of the families and a couple of the organizers that I coordinated this with. So we're going to give it a try and see if we can watch the video. It's about a minute long. Let's see. I think there's like about four more slides. We have to see Mr. Ward showing a tour, giving a tour of his cranberry bogs. There we go. So Carver Elementary School recently participated in this incredible mini-immersion with five families from Lima, Peru. So this all started with, actually, I met a man named Peter McGovern, who works for Ed Odyssey. He actually has been doing exchange programs with the Plymouth Public Schools. So I met him last year at a graduation dinner for four of the Chinese students. And I told him I was always interested in doing an immersion program. And this was in June of 2018. And he emailed me two weeks after and said, "All right, I have a group of schools, a group of families from Villa Per Se in Lima, Peru, and it's a private K-8 elementary school who has a very similar philosophy to Carver Elementary School. So are you interested?" And I'm thinking, this is soon. We still hadn't even moved out of the old Carver Elementary Schools. But I talked with some of my staff and with Mr. Neef, and we said, "Okay, five families. Let's see if we can make something happen with this." So the goal of the program was for students from Carver Elementary and Lima, Peru to gain a better understanding of each other, the language, culture, traditions, and make friends, and hopefully make lifelong friends. So the Peruvian students traveled with a parent, and they stayed with five host families for a total of six nights. And they attended Carver Elementary School three days. So it was October 29th, 30th, and 31st. And in Lima, Peru, their school year starts in January and it ends in December. So they're at the tail end of their school year right now. Their private school is, they believe in this, or they practice, they teach their children based on the philosophy, Asiri method. It's A-S-I-R-I, which is to think, feel, and believe, which is, in some ways, similar to what we've been working on with mindfulness, calm classroom, and some of those practices to really help educate the whole child. So the students came, the program started, actually, the students arrived on a Friday night late. And host families that are here in the audience, they met me at the elementary school, 11th, actually midnight, Friday night. And they met the family briefly, loaded them up in their car, and drove to their home. So then on Saturday, just to give you a little bit of information on the itinerary, it was basically a family day. We had hoped that we would be able to go to the pumpkin patch, but that was the day of the, one of the many days of the heavy rains. And so we made a switch and had the families go to pins bowling. So you saw some of those pictures of the first day where they were all bowling. And then they did some evening activities together. The goal really was for the children and their families, they really wanted to know what it's like to live a day in the life of an American Carver student. So if children were going to go cheerleading practice, or football practice, or baseball practice, whatever the case, the families really wanted to do that. They also really wanted to learn a lot about the Halloween tradition. So they don't have pumpkins. They grow a type of squash in Lima, Peru, but not like a pumpkin. So they'd never carved pumpkins. They don't go trick-or-treating, but they had learned and read about this, so they wanted to do this with our children. So some of our families did some pumpkin carving with them on Saturday night. And those types of activities, it'd be nice if some of the families could come up and just talk a little bit about that. But that was Saturday. And then Sunday, it was basically outlined to be another family day. Some of our families, I know the Gingriches took two of the families to Providence to go see the Bruins play. And then on Monday, the children all arrived to come to school. They were all paired up with a Carver buddy, either one of the children from here, or you also saw some photos of Will Linum. His mom worked very closely with me to be sort of our family liaison, Mrs. Linum, Jen Linum. So Will was a partner with one of the students, and so was Sarah Crump's little boy, Patrick Crump, who's in the 5th grade. You saw him there. They were measuring pumpkins. Jen Kelly put together a math lesson for them so that they could learn a little bit about measurement, US measurement, because they use metric. So Monday, they came to school. The parents spent the whole day at the elementary school, and we put together a very busy schedule for them. We wanted them to get to know what it was like to be in a 1st grade classroom, 2nd grade, and so forth. So they had an opportunity to be in on meetings and greet the children. And some of our teachers did little mini-greetings in Spanish and really spent time with the parent visitors, talking to them about the language. And the parents really engaged with our students. Most of the parents speak fairly good English, so that wasn't such a barrier. But the children, they spoke some English, but not much. So anyway, the day, Monday, as you saw in some of those pictures, Mr. Neef also took them for a tour of the new school. Mrs. Sexton and Mrs. Stahl did a drumming lesson. You saw the drums in the gym. So there was a group of the families here and some of the students from school in the drumming activity. So again, really just immerse them in our school day. And then you saw the parents also, they had a tour of Mr. Ward's bogs. One day, they went shopping while the kids stayed in school, and then the third day, they spent some time in Plymouth and the bogs while, again, the students were in school. So our students connected with their teachers that were involved, were Mrs. Tarquini, Mrs. Balboni, Mr. McKeachan, Mrs. Lewis, and Mrs. Cassani. So the students were in those classrooms, distributed through 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. And let me see, what do we have on our next slide? And then, these are just images of the families. So each child came with a parent. So there was one girl. She arrived with her mom, Maria, and Rosio. And then the other four students were boys, and they all traveled with their father. They were here about a total of 10 days. After they left Carver, they went to Boston, and they did Duck boats, Fenway Park, and a couple of other things. So overall, I would say that was a highly successful immersion. I'm so grateful to the host families and to our teachers and the students. They just, everyone really embraced these families and welcomed them to the school and made them feel right at home. And I'm truly honored just to have been involved with this experience and looking forward to talking about what the future might be in terms of immersion. But the new elementary school was just very impressive to them as well, and our students, and again, just the families, who really were very generous and very gracious to host these families, like Mr. Neef said earlier, you know, five families that they'd never met before, and they took them in, and whether it was allergies or whatever the types of unique foods or interests, they just embraced it and supported these children and their dads or moms day and night for six days. So we couldn't have done it without you. You are absolutely amazing. And I'm hoping that you'll come up and share a couple of the highlights, because those little, those pictures, those are just little mini glimpses of the whole experience.
We'd love to have, no pressure, but anybody who wants to come up and share a little bit, we'd love to have them come up and share what they gained from the experience.
We'd love to hear from the kids first.
Mr. Blackwell is amazing. Thank you so much for everything.
I'll just be—
He's following you.
Excellent. There you go.
What do you want to say? You talk for us, and I'll talk.
My favorite thing to do with Rodrigo was pumpkin carving, because they hadn't done it before, and it was fun teaching them how to carve a pumpkin, and he had a really fun face on his.
And that's actually the first point I was going to bring up. It was, you know, new experiences for us and new experiences for them. But if one point sticks out, it was Rodrigo. Dante was the father, Rodrigo was the son. And for Rodrigo to cut that pumpkin and the glow on his face, you couldn't describe it, right? It was, I'm sure it was a highlight of his trip. Ms. Tarquini, who was his teacher while he was here, she was great, and I know he really cared for her. And she was nice enough to make a card that all the kids signed. And when he brought that home from school that day, and he showed me, he had to show me, "Look what I got, look what I got." So I know they had a great experience. The father, Dante, was a very nice guy. The language barrier was difficult. A lot of Google Translate, thank God, the technology, because that helped us through it all. But a very nice man, who we will probably keep in touch with, you know, for years to come. So it was a great experience, and anyone that hasn't done it, you can learn a lot in a week, and I think we did. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Our families gave us a lot of chocolates, so I can share a little bit.
That's very nice of you.
I kept the dark chocolate.
Do you want to say anything? No? We had two families, I feel like we were cheating, because one of the fathers had worked in St. Paul for like 10 years, so he was absolutely fluent. So there was no language barrier at all. The kids were surprisingly fluent. So we didn't have any problems communicating. And I think one of my favorite things was, one of the little boys, Aurelio, when he would come home, he would talk about how much he loved doing math at Carver, because everyone could understand it. And so he really enjoyed it, and he talked about what he taught the other students, and he just had a really good time in the schools. And so he'd come back, and he'd be like, "Oh, we did this in math and this." And it was just, it was really nice, because he was connecting with the students, but he was also connecting with the education part of it. So it was really nice. And we don't have older kids. This is my oldest, and he's six. So I really was wondering how it would go with my kids being so young and them being 11 and 12. And it was great. They were so sweet to my kids, and they played like nonstop. I'd be like, "Okay, you guys have to go to bed now." Because like, they just, they kept playing together the whole time. And Connor and Hugo had trouble with their names at first, so just called them our Peruvian friends, and towards the end, got their names. But we will keep in touch with them. We will probably go and visit them at some point when my kids get older, because it was, we connected with them, we had a great time, and I would absolutely do this again. Want to say anything?
Thank you.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. She keeps shaking her head, "No." You sure you don't want to add anything? You sure? Did you learn any new Spanish or anything?
We had Maria and her mom, Rosio. And I think what was surprising to us is so many of the things that they enjoyed were things that they've only seen in the movies. Like, you know, we have a two-floor house, and an attic was a huge thing to them. Like, they were amazed by just, you know, the attic, or even walking around the streets and going up to the houses and getting the candy. And we had a couple of the other boys with us that night as well. And yeah, and Madeline, what we had discussed, as you might say, was that it was like having another sister, because her and Maria connected very well. Maria was very personable and hugs all the time. And they, Rosio was amazed at gym class. She came back from, you know, to the house after going to school that day and couldn't believe how active the kids were at gym, and was just amazed at the school and couldn't stop talking about it. Right? Is that it? Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. Ryan, do you have any thoughts? You don't have to.
I wanted to add that Owen Holmes and his family also was a fabulous friend to our guests, Manuel and Marcelo Chiri. Now, Mr. Chiri, or Manuel, had been in America for a while also. He was in Miami, where he said he had no reason to speak English, so that was interesting. But we have Alexa at our house, and we had the dog. So Marcelo had lots of fun speaking English to Alexa and the dog. And I think they're going to get a dog when they get home. But it's always an enriching experience, and the things we take for granted. And the attic was, he was an educated man, has been all over the world, to the pyramids of Egypt, to, you know, different parts of Europe. And when I went up to get the pumpkins in the attic, he was, "Oh, can I take pictures, please?" And he's showing to his wife, because they had seen it in movies. So I was like, "Oh, okay." It was a great stop. Our attic's a mess. But anyway, but just Carver being so special with the cranberries and the pumpkins and being so close to Boston, we take it for granted that we have a really unique town. How many people have King Richard's Fair and Ediville and cranberries within the same area? But, you know, we've hosted other people before, up with people and my own foreign relatives, and, you know, we were very comfortable. They're always very gracious, very educated. They were Roman Catholic, we're Catholic. They came to church with us. They went to IHOP for breakfast. When I first had the suitcase on Friday night, I said, "Oh, my gosh, I'm pretty strong. This thing weighs a ton. This is a young man and a young boy. What could they have in there?" They were so generous. Every day, they had another gift, another bottle of something, another liqueur, some more chocolate, some more toys for something. And I was just, and the spatial comfort zone is different, very affectionate, and it just really loving, loving people. We went to Fenway for the tour and met up with them. And my daughter goes to B.C., met us there also. And Marcelo's hugging her and saying, "Thank you for the room." I mean, it's just a really, I would highly recommend it to anybody. And thank goodness that Jack Nelson took partial custody. They do have trick-or-treating in Lima, where, you know, my family was from. I know that they travel an hour to a school, because the public education in Peru, it's one teacher to 60 students. That's about an average, they said. And it was very interesting to learn about their public education system. And these children travel a long ways and go to private school. But yes, I'm sure Lima will be on our bucket list. I know Mrs. Nelson's already making plans. So thank you for thinking of us and letting us, you know, act like grandparents for a while.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I'd just like to thank all the families for taking part in the immersion program. And I'd like to thank Ruby, because Ruby really took the lead in putting the whole program together. So thank you, Ruby, for all you did. I think it was a valuable experience for our families and for theirs, and we look forward to looking to do something again in the future.
We're going to be connecting. Students will connect through Skype and classroom and through some other lessons. So it's going to just grow from there, and lots of opportunities for the students.
And I was impressed by Mrs. Maestis's Spanish. Very strong.
That's what I—
Which I knew, but I don't necessarily see that on a daily basis, so seeing that was impressive.
And it was fun for me to be able to start, you know, to use it again. I don't use it all the time. So I was able to just, you just automatically start to—
Comes back quick.
And it comes back to you.
Yeah. Excellent.
All right. Thank you, Ruby.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to all the families. We appreciate you being here this evening. Taking a couple minutes here and there.
Thanks for taking your time to come and let us know. Very much appreciated.
That was a really good way to start the meeting.
That's cool. I guess we'll be into the agenda?
We will. Just kind of giving everybody a minute to move along. We start with comments from the general public. Nobody's jumping up, so we'll move on to comments from EAPC. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm good. How are you?
Good.
All right. So, good evening. Tonight, I'm compelled to respond to the closing remarks the school committee made at our last meeting. The public needs to know, over 60 people came to the last school committee meeting to make a clear statement that Carver teachers deserve a fair contract. We made that statement with our presence at the opening remarks. Then, at the end of the meeting, the chair of the committee said it was too bad it took contention to get the room packed with people. It seems that the implication is that we don't attend these meetings. It also implies that teachers who should, it is teachers who should be filling the Teachers are represented here at the school committee meeting. During many of these meetings, there are teachers that come and present and show what we've done for our children throughout the school district. We have two representatives who attend regularly so that our members can get a good night's rest and be the best teachers they can be for their children the next day and still remain informed. After that last meeting, there was a person that asked me, "What is it that the teachers want?" The teachers want what I hope everybody wants. We want what's best for our children. We want a school where we can continue to support our educators, support our colleagues with the best, and maintain them. We are afraid that we're going down a direction that isn't going to keep and maintain all of our educators in the district. And we're looking at the way that we have all of our teachers right now, and we work really, really hard to keep that maintaining, but we're afraid that that's not the case. We want what's best for the children. Carver teachers are waiting for the school committee to act in the best interest of students the way that teachers do every single day, by prioritizing them first. And that includes a fair contract. Thank you.
So I will comment since a reference to what I said was made. And I would like to start by saying many of the members up here have children in school, so to assume that we don't care about the children in this town is an incorrect statement. And secondly, I will say, as a member of this committee and a member of town politics who got involved through a contentious fight over a solar battle, as well as knowing many other people in this town who get involved over contentious issues, the point made in the statement was that no matter what, you only pack meetings when there's something contentious going on. And that's the only time that meetings are ever packed. The union is here representing its members every single night, and that is clear and appreciated, because I think it's good that they get the message. And it would be sad for me to think, as a member of an education system who doesn't show up at their school committee meetings, that we would expect every teacher to come to our school committee meetings all the time. That was not the meaning of the statement, nor the intention of the statement. Because truly, most people who are involved in local politics get involved in local politics because something negative comes knocking on their door. And I think that that's unfortunate. I think not enough people are involved in what's going on because things are going right and they want to help out with that. It's because things are going wrong. And unfortunately, that's the way a lot of it ends up working. And at that moment and at that night, that was part of what was on my mind, because there's also a solar issue going on that's back— back, and many other things going on. So, that's what that statement was in reference to. But it's not always quoted as it's said. So, I'll leave with that. And we will move on to an update by Student Advisory Council, but nobody's here. So, then we move on to approval of minutes.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 15th, regular session and executive session.
Motion made in second. Any questions, changes, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Three ayes and one abstention. Communications?
Yep. No, no specific communications going on to reports from the superintendent. We have very limited personnel movement in the past month. We have one new hire, Deborah Demirlis, as a food service worker, who's actually going to begin tomorrow, full-time. And we had one resignation/retirement, Jackie Murtha, as a bus driver. So, that's been our only personnel movement since our last meeting. I'll go right into the October 1 data.
Please.
That works. All right. So, last, last month, we started out by looking at our enrollment. And we said that our enrollment was down 21 students as compared to 2017. And I've linked several documents in here for the committee to review. Gina, if you can bring up the private school outside enrollment document, that's where I'm going to kind of really focus. My comments. Yep, that's the one. So, the things, the things that's in here in the background is a list of students who live in Carver but are being educated in another way, private schools, and kind of a 10-year review of the numbers of the students who live in Carver and been educated in another way. When you look at all the enrollment data for the, that came in through October 1, which we've been looking at over the past few weeks, there's some key pieces that I want to kind of highlight for the committee and then take any questions you have. First, in 2018, we had five additional students who live in Carver but are seeking educational alternatives. These five students represented 23% of our decrease in enrollment. So, we had 21 students leave the, our enrollment was down by 21 students. Five students represent a change in looking, they still live here in Carver but are going to school someplace else. Last year, our decrease in enrollment was 52 students, and 17 of the 52 still lived in Carver but were seeking educational alternatives. So, year over year, we've actually had a reduction in our students leaving the district by about 60%. So, really, of our 21 students' enrollment change, 16 are the result of demographic changes, students moving out of town or changes in the total population. Though, we still have seen that steady uptick. The bottom line is, this year, we have five more students who live in Carver attending some schools someplace else than we did last year. And that's been a trend over the last 10 years. I'm not going to have Gina pull up the 10-year report, but if you look at the 10-year report over time, over that 10 years, you know, the percentage of students who live in Carver but are seeking an educational alternative has just consistently grown. This year, it grew by five more students. The reality is also, the options for those students have also grown over the past 10 years, with the increase in the number of charter schools. The virtual academies have become popular, so within the last couple of years, we've seen a lot of students going towards virtual academies. School choice has increased in the area, so there are more schools in southeastern Massachusetts that have become school choice schools. So, there are more options for students, and some students are taking advantage of those options. So, we have to look at that and think about why our students leaving our district, and what can we do to best support our students so we don't have anybody leave. Obviously, we'd love to have every kid who lives in Carver attend the Carver Public Schools. You know, that might be a little bit of an unrealistic goal. There's always going to be some people who make some choices for private education. But ultimately, our goal is we want to maintain as many of our kids who are living here going to school. But really, we're pretty, we're pretty level in comparison to last year. And actually, for some things, we're in a better, better position in terms of some of those things that we actually pay more money for, or that the district loses money for, in essence. So, for example, charter school enrollment actually decreased. Last year, we had 42 students attending charter schools. This year, it's down to 38. School choice enrollment increased by one student. It went from seven to eight. Now, in terms of school choice, we have to remember, we also take students in via school choice. And based on the October 1 numbers, we have 30 students enrolled in our districts through school choice, including 10 additional students since we opened up school choice for grades six through nine. And since October 1, that number's actually gone up. We've had five additional students enroll with us via school choice since the October 1 report. So, as of today, we have 35 students enroll in the district via school choice, and 11 of them being in where we opened up school choice in grades six through nine. So, in the school choice concept, we have eight students going out, but right now, we're bringing 35 students in. So, that's still a net gain for us in terms of the dollars. And not saying we're looking at students solely as dollars, but we have to consider that aspect of it when we look at student migration and students moving, because ultimately, students attending charter schools cost the district money in terms of our support from the state. Students going school choice cost the district money. So, we have to look at those numbers and see what's happening there. Our virtual academy enrollment stayed level at 10 students. We had 10 students last year, 10 students this year. Our agricultural enrollment increased from three to seven. My sense is that that's just, that was that cohort of kids. There was a group of kids who wanted to seek the agricultural opportunities. And I think, though, no matter what programmatic changes we make, I don't know if we're ever going to be in a position where we're going to offer a full agricultural program at Carver Middle High School.
Majority's all animal science.
Yeah. And so, so students who are going to seek that type of program, you know, I think that's just a little bit of a large cohort. Though, the district does, there's a financial cost to that. We pay for the students to attend the agricultural schools, so that increased to three to seven when we looked at the budget process, had a budgetary impact. Old Colony vocational enrollment decreased from 92 to 91. If you look at our, if you look at our vocational enrollment over the last 20 years, it's consistently between 90 and 95 students. That's how many students they enroll from Carver. That, that's, that's a number that's really stayed stationary for many, many years. Religious private school enrollment increased from 47 to 51 students. And our homeschool population increased from 28 to 29, but that's really staying pretty level. Students attending private academies remain pretty steady, at eight students. So, if you actually look at this data overall, we were pretty, we're pretty consistent this year for where we were last year. And last year, we raised the concern, because I think in the, the previous 10 years, as this number was increasing, the district really wasn't looking at it. So, the former superintendent, Elizabeth Sorrell, and even myself, my first year or so, we weren't necessarily looking at these number of students who are attending other schools. And we began to realize we have to. You know, we have to be concerned about why are students choosing to go to a charter school or a private school or school choice, and, and turn that and look back at our own programming. So, as, as part of this process, we actually surveyed all the families who have left. Now, not everyone completed the survey. We couldn't force them to do it, but we did have 54 families complete the survey. I have the detail of each individual of the 54 answers for you. I'm not going to show that up on the public screen, because they, I'm not going to show all 54 survey results, but that is in the background for the committee to take a look at. But we do have some documents. It's kind of a, a graphic representation of why students told us they decided to withdraw. The only thing I will say about the, the survey itself is, we came up with some ideas, and then we basically allowed people to add information. So, what we put in for choices for why students left, we say curriculum, AP offerings, class size, athletics, availability of electives, legacy, meaning they were going to a school because their family had gone, you know, their family's always gone to B.C. High, and their father went to B.C. High, and their grandfather went to B.C. High, and his grandfather went to B.C. High. So, they were going to go to B.C. High. They were moving, religious reasons, special education, faculty, peers, vocational opportunities or other. So, parents could check off one or more of those boxes. Some, some families checked off one box, some families checked off multiple boxes. And then they were also allowed to make comments, specific comments. So, what Gina's showing up on the screen right now is kind of the summary of the 54 students or 54 families who completed the survey, and what they checked off in the boxes. Obviously, the largest response was vocational. A lot of our students going to Voc-Aggie said, "I'm choosing Voc-Aggy because I'm looking for a vocational experience." 17, 17 families said they were moving. You know, that, that was their primary reason for leaving the district, is they were moving to a different town. As I said, several families checked off more than one box. There were families that checked off vocational, and, as an example, other, and athletics, or moving, but they also checked off athletics or peer relations. You know, so there were, there were families that checked off multiple boxes. But the, the most, the primary answers, responses were moving and vocational opportunities. We also did the type of transfer. So, Gina, if you scroll down a little bit. So, this, this actually encompasses all of our transfers, not just the 54 who'd completed the survey. So, of all of our transfers within the last year, between October 1 and October 1, 42% of them said it was for vocational Aggie experiences. 36%, and I, what we called it public, is they were just moving to a different public school. So, they moved. 8% decided to attend charter schools. Six chose a religious or private school. 4% identified school choice. 2% moved towards homeschooling, and 2% moved to alternative. The alternative would be probably Middleboro Evening School. They were looking for an alternative way to earn their diploma that was not Matt Academy or a charter school. So, that 2% of alternative is students who enrolled in an evening school program, most likely Middleboro Evening School, as the type of transfer. You know, so, you know, I look at this data, and I, I have a, you know, obviously, people moving, demographic, demographic shifts does not, we don't have a lot of control of that. And I think students are always going to select vocational experiences. Though, I think some of what we're going to see by final, I'm going to kind of make three presentations in a row, but those three presentations are kind of, kind of linked together. One is this on the movement of kids. One is on the accountability system. And then the third one is kind of a, almost a beginning of a vision statement of where we'd like to see ourselves move. And in that beginning of a vision statement of what direction we'd like to see the district moving, we're going to talk a little bit about vocational, maybe trying to bring some vocational pieces back, or some career and technical pieces back into the middle high school. And not saying we, students shouldn't go to, shouldn't go to Old Colony, but maybe, maybe there's some experiences we could offer within our school that might keep some of those kids from going to some of those options. And then I also think it might assist with our charter school enrollment and possibly our school choice enrollment. You know, I think in terms of private, we might help with those as well, but I feel sometimes that private and religious and homeschool, we could change programming. There's still going to be a small segment of people who make a decision to homeschool their kids. We could change our programming. There's still going to be a small segment that are going to choose private religious education, because they feel, you know, that's personal choice within their family. So, we're not going to, we're not going to change all of these transfers. But our goal, our thought process would be, let's see if we can mitigate some of this. You know, specifically, you know, from a financial standpoint, we want to try to mitigate movement towards charter schools. We want to try to mitigate our movement for school choice, because those pieces have financial implications. You know, you could argue that technically it all has a financial implication, because of the students at a private school, they're not in our October 1 number. So, that, so that makes our enrollment lower, so that affects our Chapter 70. But as Brad's already talked about, we're kind of hold harmless anyhow. Right now, we'd have to build back a lot of kids in terms of the Chapter 70 formula. So, really, our focus would be, what can we do to retain kids from going to charter schools? And what can we do to retain kids and not make them the choice to school choice? Even though that number's small, it was only eight students in the entire district who chose a different school district. You know, we want to keep those eight kids in Carver. And we're going to kind of talk about some of those things as we get into that final presentation at the end. So, in terms of themes, you know, looking at this data, we didn't have a huge shift from last year. Our movement was actually pretty consistent. And I was pleased to see our charter school number go down, and we'd like to see it continue in that direction and see our charter school number go down. But also looking at themes of what parents identified, you know, there really wasn't a clear, it wasn't like the survey said, "You know what? We have a real problem with class size." Or, "We have a real problem with our curriculum that we're offering." Or, "We have a real problem with the number of electives that we offer kids." I think those are actually areas of concerns. I do think in some places, curriculum, in some places, the number of electives we're offering kids is a concern. And some of our visionary statements can be, see what kind of electives we can build back, especially at the middle high school level. But I don't think the survey data gave us a clear theme or direction and said, "Ooh, this is something, this is a red flag that we need to be really concerned about." But it's all data that we're taking in and looking at as we think about what we can do to move forward in the future and the vision of our school system. So, that's kind of my overview on the movement. And I guess at this point, on that piece, I'll, I'll take any questions or thoughts in terms of the movement of our kids over the past, past year.
Quick question, just on the children coming, choosing Carver. Is there a, is there a specific area they're coming from, or is it, is it one general area or town?
So, of our, of our, of our 35 school choice students currently, I actually have an updated list of where they're coming from, so I can read that. We have one student from Freetown-Lakeville. We have one stu, five students from Middleboro, one from New Bedford, five from Plymouth, two from Plimpton, and 21 from Wareham, is where our school choice students are currently coming from.
Thank you. Andrew?
Oh, I agree with probably 90% of what you said, Scott. So, the only, first of all, this data, we've requested for a long time, and it was great to get it. I know for, for years that James and I were sitting next to each other, we talked about this data, and it's extremely important. So, thank you for, for hearing that and addressing it and getting this information. And I understand that when people are leaving, they're not going to give you all the information, you know, but I, I do feel like there are some, some gaps that, that they do talk to. And, and those are things that we do hope to address. And, and being able to fill in some of those gaps when, you know, and being able to listen to some of these, you know, when somebody mentions some experiences and they're, and they're really breaking it down to, "This is, this is my reason," I do take that as, you know, "Let's, let's, let's really address it. Let's look into it." And, and that's nice, knowing, coming from somebody that is not here anymore. So, that, so I do see a lot of value in this. So, I, I, you know, I think taking, and I don't want to speak exactly to this, because I know the public can't see it, but I mean, when you're taking some information when somebody's leaving.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I could address that piece, but in terms of, so I said I don't see themes. So, but clearly, there, there are specific areas of concern that are raised by, by a couple of responses. And clearly, we're, we're looking at that data. We're sharing that with administrators as an administrative team. We're looking at those pieces. And, you know, I don't think they necessarily be appropriate to share out one or two individual persons' responses at this point.
And they're not.
But definitely, that's, it's all data points. It's all data points that we're looking at.
And I think it does point to some gaps. That's what I was getting.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think that's, I think that's a very fair statement, and we're, we're going through all this data.
And we're looking to fill.
Yep. Absolutely. Absolutely. Yep.
Glad you brought, I'm glad you brought that up, Andrew, because I kind of noticed the same, but I wasn't sure if I should mention it, actually, so.
You're here, man.
The public wasn't able to see it.
I, no, I agree. I mean, you know, just having briefly reviewed the data, you know, having had kids in the system, I agree. I think there are some points, and I'm glad to hear that they're being discussed and that they're being addressed, because I think it's, it's important for, you know, us to try to make that educational experience in Carver the best it can be.
And hopefully, you'll see part of that when we get into the, a little bit of the vision piece at the end, when we start to begin, begin to lay out the basic framework or scaffold for a vision for the district for the future. So, hopefully, you'll see some of that incorporated in that. And as we go forward, it feels like there's missing pieces as we go into that budget piece over the next few months. We could definitely, I'll just take a look at those things. So, are we ready to transition to accountability data?
Accountability data.
So, at some point in this presentation, Gina and I are going to switch spots, just because I'm going to take you into the state report. I'm going, I'm going to take you into what's available online for the public, just so people can see that. And it's not always the easiest access, and I'm not expecting people to remember it, but if they can remember the basics of where to go to look at some of that accountability data, that'd be great. So, Gina, if you can go into the presentation, yep, that'd be great. So, for, the first slide. I think you skipped, yeah, you skipped one. There you go. What is an accountability system? An accountability system is a set of policies and practices that a state uses to measure and hold schools and districts responsible for raising student achievement for all students, and to prompt and support improvement where necessary. I mean, so really, that's kind of the focus of the accountability system that the state has created, is to raise student achievement for all students across the board, and actually to raise students for, raise performance for maybe some students who have been underperforming. And we're going to see some of the things in the accountability system, the way they're set up. For example, there's a focus on improving the scores of your low For example, there's a focus on improving the scores of your lowest twenty-five percent. That's a focus of the accountability system. So Massachusetts' previous accounting system was in place since two thousand twelve. It was changed in the fall of, right now, fall of two thousand eighteen, due to the new federal requirements under ESSA, that every student should succeed act. So the one point that I want to make, and I'm glad you've gone to the next slide, Gina, is that last couple of weeks, I've actually had the opportunity to attend some presentations on the state level on the accountability system. Specifically, I attended a seminar with Rob Curtin. Rob Curtin, whose quotes on the next slide, is the Associate Commissioner of Data and Accountability for DESI. Basically, as he will say, he created the system. He's the mastermind of the system, he's the person who's the most knowledgeable in it. And he's, he's really actually, he's very persuasive in when he speaks about, he has a lot of passion about the system he's created. Obviously, it's his system, he has passion about it. But one of the first things that he pointed out, he said, as you talk to your communities about this accountability system, make sure that people do not make any, try to make any connections between the old accountability system and the new. Said they are totally different systems, you can't, there's no crosswalk document. You can't say, we were a level two and now we're this. He said it's totally unrelated. So this is a brand-new, new system, new setup. And that no one should try even attempt to make any connection between this system and the previous systems that have been in place. So I guess I said, I'll stop my presentation that way and say, this is what the person who created the system is very clear in saying. I should say that same statement. The other thing that was very clear is this was his, this was his opening comment, this is the first thing he said when we met. The account, so this is the person who created the system. The accountability system is one piece of evidence. It is certainly not the only element that represents a quality school. So this is, he, so he's, he wants to say to districts and to school committees and to communities, yes, we're releasing this accountability data, this accountability data, it has a purpose. It's really looking at trying to look at growth for everyone. We want to see everyone grow. And we want to give some schools some guidance to help them grow. But it's not the be-end and end-all of what makes a good school. And so this, this was his opening comment at, at his presentation. So Gina, go on to the next, yep. So levels in the accountability system. So this accountability system has two levels. It's schools without required assistance or intervention, schools requiring assistance or intervention. And really, he doesn't even like to use the word levels anymore. He likes to use the term, you know, this is, this is your placement. You know, you're a school that requires assistance, or you're a school that doesn't require assistance. Schools without required assistance intervention are broken into four categories. There are schools of recognition, schools meeting targets, schools partially meeting targets, schools not meeting targets. And you go into the next slide, and if you see a, a white slide on this presentation, is directly from the DESI website, is directly from Rob Curtin's presentation. So if it's blue, it's a slide I put together, if it's white, I want to make sure I'm giving Rob Curtin and DESI credit for, this is, this is their slide. And so categorization of schools, this just says the same thing I just said to you. But they wanted, they were real, real direct in making it horizontal versus vertical. And it was very interesting listening to Mr. Curtin speak. Because he created the accountability system we used before, he was also the designer of that system. He's been in the same role for, I believe, close to eight years for DESI. So this is, this, he's been doing the accountability systems. And he said, I was really surprised under the old system, the old system had five levels, level one through five. And he goes, maybe I shouldn't have been, maybe I was a little naive. But I was really surprised at how much communities, school committees, and I'm not saying you did this, this was a generic statement, of how much communities and school committees got hung up on level two, level one. Why aren't we a level one school? And the pressure that schools began to feel like, well, they're a level one school, we need to be a level one school. Or we're a level three school, we need to be a level two school. And he said that the data actually didn't support their system. That there could just, there could be a small difference in some, some subgroup's performance that would move you from two to one. That really, from even DESI's perspective, was really insignificant. But people were getting caught up on, we've gone from level one to level two, what's happening to our school system? And so he said, I really focused on wanting to move away from that. And, and he was pretty passionate about this piece of saying that this new system is not, it's not vertical. It's not, it's not if you're a school that needs broad comprehensive support, you're at the bottom. And if you're a school of recognition, you're at the top and everyone falls in between. He goes, it really is horizontal. And we're trying to identify, these is, there are some school districts that require some assistance from the state. There are, most school districts do not. Because they're doing, they may be doing, they're doing fine or better than fine. So he's really breaking into those two categories. And that's how they like to call it, just the categories of where you stand. Schools without required assistance or intervention, or schools requiring assistance or intervention. The school district in both our schools are, both are all schools without required assistance or intervention, so I'll tell you that now. We're not on the requiring assistance intervention side of the plate. The other thing that's changed is they wanted to be a little more comprehensive in terms of what they looked at. The past accountability systems really just looked at test scores. So this system does a little bit more than look at test scores. And it breaks it into non-high schools and high schools. And the data, this is going to get a little confusing during my presentation, I hope I can keep it, I hope I can keep it straight for you. It's straight in my mind, but I hope I can keep it straight for you. Non-high school, a non-high school is really third through eighth grade. Because it still involves test scores. So your first graders aren't factored into this data because they don't take tests. They don't take the MCAS exam. And your high schools are nine through twelve. And what makes that a little confusing is, is we have schools like ours that we have a six through twelve school. So in the reporting, it's actually reported out in two different ways. When we actually go and look at the data, if you look at our district report, it talks about nine, non-high schools, it's talking about our students in grades three through eight. When it talks about the high schools, it's talking about our students in grade nine through twelve. But if you go into our individual school data, it actually separates the, the middle school kids are in, because there's a school called the middle high school. So that school has to have a rating system. So in the school rating system, it actually breaks out the middle school and the high school, it breaks out six, seven, and eight, breaks out nine through twelve. But for the district reporting, six through eight is lumped in with three through eight, does that make sense? And if you look at just the elementary school, it's just really three, four, and five. So the six, seven, and eighth graders kind of get reported in two different ways. In the high school report, they're in, they're part of that. In the district report, they're brought together with the three, four, and five. So the data, so you might have a hard time looking at, you could look at something that says non-high school in the data reporting, and the numbers can be a little off. Because in one system, if you're looking at the district, it's actually looking at non-high schools three through eight, and combining and averaging all their scores. Does that make sense? If you look at just the elementary school, it's only doing three, four, and five. If you're looking at the middle high school, it's only doing six, seven, and eight, under that category of non-high schools. And then obviously the high school category. So what are the elements, what are the indicators? For non-high schools, it's achievement, which is your MCAS scores for ELA, math and science. It's student growth for only ELA and math. And the reason why it's only ELA and math is science is not given every year, science is only given in five, eight, and high school. Obviously, for non-high schools, high school completion is not a factor, it's not applicable. English language proficiency is not applicable for our district yet. To have any subgroup count, you have to have at least twenty students in that subgroup. We do not have twenty students as, who identify as ELL at, in either building. Actually, district-wide, now we're up to twenty-four ELL students. So if you remember, two years ago, we were two ELL students, so we've gone from two to twenty-four. So that is a growing population. But right, we still don't meet the end number, we still don't have twenty in either pot, twentieth elementary school or twentieth middle high school. And then at the elementary school, they've identified an additional indicator, which is chronic absenteeism. And chronic absenteeism is decided as percentage of students missing ten percent or more of their school days. High school side has a little bit more. Has your achievement data, your student growth. Then it also has these three factors. Four-year graduation rate, extended engagement rate. That's the number of students who stay in school after four years but are still working towards a diploma. So they're going to, you get credit in the accountability system if you have a student who hasn't earned his diploma, but you're still engaging them. You still have them in school in a fifth year, working towards earning their diploma. Or you have a student who dropped out who re-Enrolls in school. So extended engagement rate is one of two things. It's a student who is in year five, but still in your school, we're earning, working towards earning a diploma. Or a student who dropped out in year three, but now you've brought them back in to earn, to earn their diploma. With the whole concept of, you're working hard to make sure your kids aren't dropping out of school, you're keeping them engaged. And then your annual dropout rate. Again, we don't meet the ELL proficiency yet, so we don't have to worry about that subcategory as of this time. And then at the high school, they also added these two additional factors. Chronic absenteeism, the same as the elementary school, percentage of students missing ten percent or more. But then also, percentage of eleventh and twelfth graders completing advanced coursework. And advanced placement courses, higher-level math, dual enrollment, selected rigorous courses. I mean, I don't need to, I'm not going to read it to you, but maybe I'll pass it around. This is, this is DESI's list of advanced courses. So just to show, so you actually get credit for kids being enrolled in the courses on that list. And they give you a ranking on that. So any questions on the indicators? And obviously, the goal here on the indicators was to, I'll get into that in a second. So going on to the next slide. They wanted to keep a three-to-one ratio. So the bottom line is the, the achievement, the test scores still count the most. And so if you look at the breakdown, if you're a non-high school, your achievement, how the kids do on the MCAS exam is sixty-seven percent of your number in the accountability system. Twenty-three percent is growth, ten percent is additional indicators, that chronic absenteeism piece. At the high school level, it's forty-eight percent achievement, twenty-two percent growth, twenty percent for those high school cohort, that four-year graduation rate, extended engagement rate, dropout rate. And then same, ten percent for chronic absenteeism and students completing advanced coursework. Now, chronic absenteeism actually counts more at the elementary school. That chronic absenteeism at the elementary school counts the full ten percent. At the middle high school, that ten percent is divided in half. So five percent is students that have completed advanced coursework, five percent is chronic absenteeism. So how is this different? And I've kind of already hit on these pieces a little bit. It discontinued the level system and the placement of districts into accountability, and placed students in accountability categories. So we already talked about that. The inclusion of additional accountability indicators. You know, the old system was only the tests, so now there's things here beyond the test that count in your system. And really, the focus on raising the performance of the district's lowest-performing students in addition to improving the performance of all students. So this whole concept of the lowest twenty-five percent. So when we get into the actual data, you're going to, you're going to see that the lowest twenty-five percent actually count equally to the rest of the student population. With the focus of them saying, we want to see you taking your students who performed, were the least successful in having them move up. They identified the lowest twenty-five percent solely based on test scores. So you look, they look, and they're going to do that every year. So last year, they said, MCAS data, who, who were your kids who scored at the lowest, the lowest twenty-five percent of your scores? And it was funny, originally there was some people like, well, we may not have a lot of students who fall into the lowest twenty-five percent. And they're like, no, no, it's not the lowest twenty-five percent of the state, it's the lowest twenty-five percent of your school. Every school has the lowest twenty-five percent. You know, you could have, everyone gets an A, if everyone got an A, someone, there'd still be a lowest twenty-five percent, someone got a lower A. So they identified for your school the lowest twenty-five percent. And they're going to do that each year. Now, last year was a little bit of a setup because they didn't tell you who the lowest twenty-five percent were until May, after the kids had already taken the exam. So it was, it was hard to actually put in any interventions to have those students approved, since you didn't know who they were. Now, you, we knew who they, you know who they were anyhow. You know, obviously you have a sense of the kids who are struggling. But their goal is to have that information come out sooner. We still have, we don't have it for this year yet, but I spoke to, when Rob Curtin presented last week, he said his goal is that by Thanksgiving, every district will have, I doubt, will get a list of who the lowest twenty-five percent are going to count in those categories for accountability. So if the district wanted to say, hey, we want to put in some special interventions over the next six months for these students, they'll be able to do that. Last year, we didn't have the opportunity to do that, but we're actually going to find out that our lowest twenty-five percent scored very well. They were very successful last year. So any, this is probably a good breaking point, any questions right now? So this is where it starts to get a little confusing. And I don't even, you should probably just ignore this slide. Pretend it's not up there. Pretend I didn't even put it up there. I was trying to tell you what they did is, so it's, the system's about growth, they want to see kids grow. So for, for every student, for every kid, they establish growth targets. For every cohort of kids, they establish a target, we want to see people grow. And they, but they had to come up with this target in some way. And the way they did it, I'm sure from a mathematical standpoint, is pretty sound. But it's a little confusing to think about. So I'll try to explain it without reading that slide. What they did is they looked at from, over, from two thousand thirteen to two thousand sixteen, they looked at every kid's test, whether it was MCAS or PACC, no matter what exam you took. And then they actually broke every school in Massachusetts into four quartiles. The lowest twenty-five percent, the next twenty-five percent, fifty to seventy-five, seventy-five to a hundred, based on performance. So they said, okay, we're going to put you into a quartile of where you performed. Then they looked at the quartiles and said, over that four-year period, what was the average growth? Now, what was hard about that is not everyone took the same test. Some people were taking the old MCAS, some people were taking the PACC. So they were kind, they were trying to come up with growth targets based on unlike things, you know, tests that weren't the same. But they, they came up with the targets, they came up with numbers. And they said, in this quartile, if you were in the third quartile, you're in the fifty to seventy percent quartile, your average growth of the, every kid was one-point-four percent, or one-point-four points. And they did this across the board. Then after they set up those quartiles, what they did is they took your scores from last year, two thousand seventeen, and created four new quartiles, based solely on one-year scores. So that's a key point here, is your targets for this year were really based on one-year scores. And they said, okay, you, your school was in the third quartile, or your subgroup was in the third quartile. And if we go back, the groups that you were in the third quartile over that four-year period, they had this average growth, that's your target. And what they, what they came up with was the next slide. Now, this is, this is, this is really in-depth when you look at the system. Because they established this box for all students, for every subgroup, for every school. So they said, okay, if in grades three through eight math, all students. If you were in quartile one, your target was one-point-eight points. If you were in quartile two, your target was one-point-five. If you were in quartile three, your target was one-point-four. So what we're going to see, I'm going to, when I go into the data, is for grade, for grade three through eight math, in our two thousand seventeen scores, we fell in quartile three. So our, our student growth target was going to be one-point-four points. They wanted to see our test scores go up by one-point-four points. For our lowest-performing students, they wanted to see it go up by three-point-six. For our students with disabilities, they wanted to see it go up by two-point-one. So they established this system, this chart. So this is just one chart, you can go into their, I have the report here if you really want to see it. It shows you every chart for every subgroup for every grade span. And if you actually go back and look at the data, it's all in there. But it's a little confusing when you look at the data, you're like, where did they come up with these target numbers? Because there's no consistency in them. Because the, and this, I don't know if this gets too confusing, but I'm going to show you an easy example. I purposely chose it because it's easy. So our grade three through eight math, we were in quartile three for all students of lowest performing. In theory, for students with disabilities with that same group of kids, we could have been in quartile two. Because they actually established all the quartiles by subgroup. So that even makes it more challenging, because you could be looking at grade three through eight math groups, or some school district could have all students in quartile three, lowest performing in quartile one, students with disabilities in quartile four. And they're pulling all those target numbers from this chart that they went and did the math on. But the targets are very important, because remember, the system is about growth, they want to see kids grow. So the target, whether you meet your target really determines how many points you get in the accountability system. So I wanted to give you some understanding of where these target numbers came from, because they're, they become very important. So, if you go on to the next slide, this, when we actually look at the data, which we're gonna do in a second, is if you fell short of your target, if you didn't meet it, or if your scores went down, you got zero points. If you had no change, if your scores were the same, so let's say your average scaled score was 500, and the next year, your average skill score was 500, you got one point. If you improved but didn't meet the target, you got two points. If you met the target, you got three points. If you exceeded the target, you got four points. So when you look at the accountability data, all you're gonna see is all these subgroups, all students, students with disabilities, and you're gonna see points. You know, they got three points, they got four points, they got one point, they got two points. It was all based on the targets. But, and the interesting part, talking to Rob Curran, is this was, this was approved, this chart you see, it's a Desi slide. This was approved by Desi. And he actually said, "I'm gonna look to change it next year to see if it's approved a different way." Because he said, "One thing I don't think I did a good job of saying was that it's that last bullet. If your school or district has a percentage score of 50% or higher, you are an improving school district." 'Cause the reality is, to get 50%, to get, the most points you can get is four. So if your average score is two, the only way you get to two is by improving. You can't get there without improving. So, he said, "I'm already sensing that school districts are gonna look." So I'll, I'll give away, I'll give away the end story. Our number is, our, our district number is 60%. So we're gonna be identified as a school not requiring assistance, partially meeting targets at 60%. But, well, Rob Curran said, "You need to go back to your community and say, 'That means you're an improving school.'" If you look at every subgroup, every test, your scores improved one year over the next. 'Cause mathematically, you couldn't get to 50% without improving. 'Cause the only way you get two points is by improving. So on average, on whole, in total, now, some places earn four points, some places earn zero points. And obviously, we're gonna look at the places that earn zero points, and we're gonna look at the places that earn four points. But overall, he said, he goes, "I'm telling you, you need to say, if your average is above 50, you can identify yourself as an improving school district." He said, "I'm actually gonna make that recommendation to Desi, that anyone who scores above 50 actually get a title of, maybe instead of partially meeting targets, get a title of improving, an improving school district." And so, those, those are the things we'll take a look at. So this is where Gina and I are gonna switch, we'll actually go into the report a little bit. It's just gonna be easier for me to navigate and frame where to see than for Gina's.
Yeah, it's complicated. Did you look at it?
It's gonna get more complicated when we're looking at all the numbers.
Oh, I'm in there. I'm a numbers person, so you know. Yeah.
Just, otherwise, they won't be happy if I'm not on the mic. So, if you just, you can just go to the DESE website. And it's not the easiest way, but I wanted to at least show the community, all this data's out there, and you can spend as many hours as you want looking at it. So if you go to, this is the main page of the website. You go on to school and district profiles. You click on school and district profiles, and you get this little picture. And all you have to do is put in your district, just put Covering. And the data will come up. And we'll look at the district data. So you just click on Report Card Overview or Complete Report Card. You can click to either one, it's gonna get you where you need to go. I know we've already done a lot of clicking. This is, I think they have to make this clearer, but you're looking at the accountability data. If you actually go into the County Profiles, there's all kinds of information on here. There's information about students, teachers, finance, assessment, but we're not necessarily looking at that. We're just looking at the data. So we'll go to Accountability Report for 2018. And then we're up, that one comes up. So, I said, "We are 60% partially meeting targets." That's our accountability category, and they're not, they're not levels, that's our category. And then you, there it is. You see all the numbers, zeros and fours and twos and threes? That's all based on the targets for each of those individual pieces. And to give you a little bit of an example, I'm gonna go into a couple of detailed pieces. First one, I'll go into the elementary school, we'll look at that three point, three through eight. So... I know it's small up here, but if you look at mathematics achievement. So, our 2017 achievement, our average scaled score on the MCAS exam for all students in grades three through eight, was 499.6. That put us in the third quartile. So, our target went up by 1.4 points. So our 2018 target was 501. So they wanted our average scale score for all our students to be 501. If we achieved that target, we would've received three points. If we would've exceeded that target, we would've got four points. In this particular example, we fell short. We actually, our average scale score went down. It went from 499.6 to 495.5, which is minus 3.9. So, we got zero points because we declined. The next one was our lowest performing students. What was our target for lowest performing students? I can go back and find it. Our target for lowest performing students was, maybe, 3.6. And so, I probably killed myself in the chromo, look at this, there we go. So look at this same group. They wanted us to go from the 40s, our score in 2017, our average scale score on the MCAS exam for all students in grades three through eight, was 474.4. They want us to be 478. That's a 3.6% increase. Our increase was actually 5.1. Our scale scores went from 474.4 to 479.5. So we exceeded the target. The target was 3.6. Our scores improved by 5.1, so we earned four points in that category. And, I, I could spend hours, I'm not going to, go, we could go through each individual one, tie it back to our target, and find out whether we earned zero, one, two, three, or four points. The only, the only caveat to this system, which is another thing that I wanna show you, is that if your score, if your, if your average scale score is in the top 10% of the state, whether you met your target or not, you earn four points. That, so they did have that caveat in there, 'cause people get concerned and say, "Well, we can't always be improving." You know, "If we have these outstanding scores, you know, if our, if our average scale score was 530, which would be really strong, you know, you can't say to us, 'We have to get to 532 next year.'" And how the state has responded to that is, is if you are in the top 10% of all scores in the state, whether you meet your target or not, you receive four points. And we do have an example of that. Our example of that is in the high school. So at the middle high school, for English Language Arts in grade 10. So if you look at English Language Arts, our 2017 achievement was very strong, it was 99.4. Our target was 100. But we didn't reach our target. We went from 99.4 to 99.5. But we earned four points because our scores were in the top 10% in the state. Same for lowest performing students in ELA in grade 10. Well, our, well, our score was 97.8. Now, I didn't make this distinction yet, remember, grade 10 still takes the old MCAS exam. That's why, you're like, "Why is one 99, the other one 499?" The, the scoring system is different for the old MCAS versus the new, the next generation MCAS. So this grade 10 is based on the old MCAS system, which was called CPI. But it's more, it's more showing the point of, we didn't meet any of our targets for grade 10 ELA, but we got exceeding targets in four points for all of those, because our 10th grade English MCAS scores were in the top 10% in the state. So that's a point of distinction anyhow. We should notify the point of distinction that they're in the top 10. And so we automatically get the four points. So there is, it is built into the system. So, going back to just the homepage, and this is the last thing I'll do on this, unless people want me to do more, is... They're like, "No, please not." If you go, you, you can spend as much time with this as you want later on. This is us, this is kind of our cover summary page. And it makes the charge. So, remember the chart I showed you earlier in terms of what the indicators were? Achievement, you know, so we have a, a number of twos and fours. Now, I wanna point something out. We have, for, for all students not in high school in English and math, in grades three through eight, we earn zero points. And this is, this is the one question I asked Rob Curran. If you actually dig into this data a little bit, it's all, this is my last, this is my last data dig. And the top one's the best one. Three, all students grade three through eight, our average, we, our achievement in 2017 on the next generation MCAS, our average score, so every student grade three through eight, that's a lot of kids, 125 per grade, right? So we're talking, talking over 700 kids. So that's over 700 kids' scores. They went from an average score of 498.5 to an average score of 497.5. And I said, "Is that really statistically significant?" I mean, I would say that's almost the same score. No, it's not improving, it's not meeting targets. But I'm like, "Is that really worthy of a zero points?" And their answer is yes, 'cause it declined. They, they view it no change as if it's within, I believe, .3. So if your average, so you could go down .3 and get no change and earn one point. But if you went down more than .3, you lose it, you get zero. You get zero points. Unless your scores were in the top 10% of those scores in the state, then you get four. Actually, if it went down, you only get three. It has to be at least level or higher to get four. So, but that's, so when you look at the detailed page, the overall, it's kinda hard to look at three through eight English and see zero points for both math and English. Be like, "Ooh, that's a concern. How do we get zero points in English and math for all students in grades three through eight?" But then, when you really look at the data, it's like, our students' scores were pretty much consistent. You know, they dipped a little bit, but not, it wasn't like there was a five-point drop in the overall scaled score. It was a point. You know, but, bottom line, that's still a zero. So you look through here, but I will say that you do consistently see a lot of our lowest performing students. Notice how the chart, that emphasis on lowest performing students, they count as half the system. So your lowest 25 in the accountability system count 50%. And now, you all know the answer to this question, do they really count 50%? 'Cause what subgroup are they also in? They're in your all students, too. So your lowest 25% really actually count like 60-some-odd percent of the overall system. So there's definitely a focus on here of improving your lowest performing kids' performance. And we did well on that side. If you look at our lowest performing, two out of four points, four out of four points, three out of four points, four out of four points, two out of four, I won't read them all to you. But our lowest performing students actually did really well. And that brought out, that actually helped bring our accountability rating up a little bit. So, what's my last slide? This is the last, I'll come to the last slide, is Takeaways. You know, remember, your targets were established based on one-year data. You know, that, that's a little bit of a flaw. So they just said, "Okay, what did you score in 2017, and we're gonna establish your target." Over time, your target's gonna be established on multiple years of data. So next year's target's gonna be based on both our scores in 2017 and 2018. The year after's targets are gonna be based on three years of scores. They haven't defined, they haven't said how long they're gonna do that for. I don't think they're gonna do that for 10 years. But I think they'll end up doing somewhere from three to five. So that your targets will be based on a range of scores, not just one-year scores. So that's clearly a flaw in the beginning of the system. So, my takeaway on that is, we shouldn't get that excited about strong scores, but we shouldn't get that... Or be, not that you shouldn't be concerned, and I don't want to say we shouldn't be concerned. We shouldn't be that upset about low scores. You know, it's, because you gotta always remember, it's based on one-year's data. It's gotta be, we have to think about it in its totality. Though our, our lowest 25% high needs and special education students perform very well. We always need to evaluate and look and strengthen the performance and growth of all students. Our rating, as I've already said, is as an improving school district, partially meeting targets. And obviously, the focus on the new indicators, we have to look at those things. So we're gonna have to look at, what are we doing in terms of kids with absence from school, chronic absenteeism? What are we doing for advanced coursework? And this is gonna kinda go into our next presentation of, do we need to be offering more advanced courses for juniors and seniors? Our graduate, I meant to show you this, too, in the data dig, my limited data dig. I put graduation rate and dropout rate on here, but actually, they were both a strength for us. We got four points across the board for all those graduation targets, 'cause our numbers on those are actually really good. Our dropout rate, our dropout rate, which they just released last week, which is gonna be used in this system, for last year was .3. So that's, basically, we had two students drop out last year. Oh, no, we don't wanna have any students drop out, but that's, that's gonna be a strong indicator. So those guys have been strengths for us, in terms of graduation rate and extended engagement rate and dropout rate. But it doesn't mean we still shouldn't, those factors are gonna be part of the accountability system, so we need to look at them. So I guess with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Scott, can you explain to me again what the, if you have a declining rating, but you never get less than a zero, how can this be used as a judgment tool for your district? If you, if you have a four, and you, if you have, if you started going down in their, in their rating, but you never get a minus of anything?
Well...
Your range grows, your, your expectation grows, right? So you fall, you're further, you fall further behind from it?
So, I, so I'm gonna go, Andy, can you ask that again, then I'll think about James's comment?
What I took from that, from your first pass on this, is if I understood it correctly, if, even if you're declining, you get a zero.
If you're declining, you get zero points.
Right, so say you're at a four.
Yep.
You're declining, so instead of going to a three or two...
You go to a zero, correct.
So you go, but your four never changes?
No, you don't add the zero, you go to a zero.
Oh, you go to a, oh, I thought you could gut a zero.
No, 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 so every, right, so, so every year, this is all new, so next year, we'll get all new numbers.
Okay.
And your numbers will be based solely on your previous performance.
I misunderstood.
Right, so, so that's what I'm saying, when they're gonna, now, they're gonna set your target. So if you did really well, and now, like I said, this year, they only better, the target was only based on one year of data. Now, they're gonna take your scores for both years, probably pick something in the middle, and then establish your target based on that, which would probably still be a little higher than your, your good scores you just had. If you stay in the top 10% of all scores, then you keep your four points. Or three points, if you go backwards. But otherwise, if you decline, if you, so if you had these really strong scores, and next year, you don't have those really scores, strong scores, then next year, you get zero points for that category. So every category's gonna be reassessed on that point system every year. Based on, based on the established targets.
Okay.
Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
I, I would add a concern that I have with this, too, and I'll end with a point that Scott has on there. But the concern that I have is, is you also have to remember that they're analyzing and looking at things over the past five years, where we went from MCAS to PACC, back to MCAS, from a paper test to a computer test. They're asking eight, nine, and 10-year-olds to compare and contrast two texts at the same time online, to highlight online, to type their answers now, to do things that although kids are tech savvy, they don't have background in this, they don't have scheme in this. So, this is, we're building something where, if you look at this data a couple of years down the road from now, there's more relevance to it, because it's in such a transition right now. These kids are, who are normally sitting down doing a math test on paper, are now having to do it online. And although they can compute, they have to transfer, and they have to know how to move the right boxes to get the mixed numbers. And there's so many components that are a change for educators, as well as students, that, you know, to, to the second slide you have here, Scott, the accountability system is just one piece of evidence. It's, it's, it's so transitional right now, that it's gonna take time to get to a point where...
And I think you really can, I think you can attack the targets a little bit. You know, obviously, Rob Curran's very mathematical, and he has, he has a team of statisticians who look at all this data and come up with the targets. That was a lot of work to create those targets. But it still goes back to, the targets were based on four years of data of people taking, like you said, all different tests in all different ways. They were taking PACC, they were taking traditional MCAS, they were taking it paper, they were taking it online. So you'll look at, they created the targets based on this mishmash of exams that were taken.
And administratively, there's a lot of pressure to meet those targets. So you have some educators who are being put in a position where they're trying to teach kids how to take the test. You're basically teaching to the test. You're not teaching what you need to be teaching in the curriculum, 'cause these kids can't get it. And to get those points that you need and want, these kids have to know how to take the test. So now, you're spending your class time teaching kids how to take the test, which is detrimental to the purpose of the whole thing in the first place.
You know, and big picture, I always, I don't... You know, and big picture, I always, I don't, I don't get that hung up on the data. Maybe that's a bad statement for me to make. But I think globally, holistically, I think there's some big pieces in the system. You know, I think it is important to look at absenteeism. You know, there's just a lot of research that says kids who don't attend school aren't as successful and have a higher rate of dropping out. I think looking at dropout rate is important. We want to keep kids engaged and going to school. I think looking at, I think looking at challenging advanced coursework, I actually like that designation. I think it is important. We need to look at what types of challenging courses and what kind of curriculum we're offering to our kids in their junior and senior year. And maybe even expanding up beyond that. They're only saying junior and senior year. Maybe it needs to be at lower grade levels. You know, so I think, I don't philosophically disagree with those concepts of those are important things for us to look at. And maybe even more important than the scores of the tests, is that engagement, that, you know, that engagement, the dropout rate, the challenging coursework, the having kids come to school. And I'm glad that those pieces are being brought into the system. I right now just question a little bit in terms of the integrity of how the targets are established and, and how that's done. But I, I do think that Rob Curtin's piece in terms of, I, but I also agree with looking to improve our weakest performing students. Philosophically, I don't disagree with that. So I think philosophically, some of the things that are happening here are good.
Which is going to take them to build. Yeah, well, they have to stick with it. And they, they have to find something that they can stay with, so that they can, you can create a learning around it, as opposed to trying to constantly adapt to it.
And maybe five years from now, you might feel better about the targets that have been established.
All right.
In terms of the validity of those targets. Maybe, and maybe not, but maybe you would, so.
Still just a piece.
Yeah, still just a piece. All right, I'm going to shift back over to my other seat, unless there's other questions. I feel like I, I feel like I've been the one-man show tonight.
No, that continues.
It continues. So the next, our next agenda item is a little bit of visionings for the school district and the educational blueprint. And start talking a bit about budget planning. So this presentation is kind of the beginning of our budget process for FY nineteen. In this presentation, I'm going to try to link design, positions designed to assist the district in restructuring to meet the needs of what we identified in our educational blueprint. At this time, this presentation assumes a level service budget. It makes a clear statement of positions we believe we'll need to fill over the next three to five years to achieve our objectives. So we'll go right, we'll go right into the presentation. So this is not formally a budget presentation. We're not going line by line through the budget. We're just going big picture, making an assumption of a level service budget, and this is how we'd like to grow and build. So I just do, I do a reminder of our, oop, sorry Gina, going back to the vision statement. You're doing a great job over there multitasking. You're right, Gina's running the slideshow and taking the minutes.
Is that the new field, field facility?
So,
That's a little exaggerated there.
The cover, no, yeah, that's our new, that's the new field, the next slide. The Cover School Committee is dedicated to continuous improvement and will collaborate to promote high standards to ensure all students become empowered learners and responsible citizens through a comprehensive curriculum that inspires students to learn and think creatively in a safe, supportive, and inclusive environment. So going on to the vision, and why is Gillette Stadium there? No, it's not because that is the new track and field facility that we've built in Cover. That's there because two weeks ago, I went to the Masque Conference, which is really a conference that looks about, the focus of the conference is integrating technology into education. But as I was thinking about our presentation, as I was thinking about visioning, I was just impressed by what Gillette Stadium is and what it's become. And I, this is just my own personal reflection coming out. I looked at this and said, you know, obviously, the crafts had a plan. They had a design. And when they first started building the stadium back in two thousand, two thousand and one, the first, the only thing that was there was a stadium. But I'm sure in their minds, they saw what's there today, which is a multi-purpose, multi-use facility in terms of having the stadium. And, I mean, so I was there for a conference. So while I was at the stadium for a conference, there was also a group of fourth graders throughout Massachusetts who were working with the New England Revolution on being, on fitness programs. And they were running all over the field, and then the revolution were doing all kinds of athleticism, promoting a healthy lifestyle.
Or sixth-grade visits.
It's, our sixth grade goes and visits Patriot Place. They run all kinds of educational programming. But while that's all going on, they have a mall, and restaurants, and hotels, and a movie theater, and bowling alleys, and, you know, there's just all these things that's going on. They have the Bass Pro Shop. So this whole mega complex that's been built over time. And I'm sure Robert Kraft and Jonathan Klass sat down and said, this is what I want it to become. And they had this vision in their mind, and they've worked diligently to achieve that vision. And now it's, now it's a reality. So though my schemes may not be that grand, the goal would be that this is kind of the beginning point of that visioning thought process of, where would we like to see us be in five years? What's our Gillette Stadium going to look like? What direction are we, what direction do we feel that we need to go with, go in? Now, this is not, the vetting process on this has started with the administrative team, with the department chairs a little bit. So Janelle's shared with the department chairs. It hasn't gone out to the next level of vetting of, obviously, we're taking thoughts and ideas from individual conversations we're having with teachers, but not necessarily bringing, teachers haven't necessarily been brought into the vetting process. So this really is a beginning point for us. And the school committee, this is the beginning point for you of being brought into this process. But this is kind of where we, where we kind of see ourselves, the direction we see ourselves going in. Go ahead, yeah. So our educational blueprint identifies four strategic objectives. Support safe schools, I will read them. Engage the community. Enhance teaching and learning. Leverage leadership policy and funding. We're saying these are our big rocks, the things we want to achieve as a school district. So what we've done as the administrative team is we've kind of given those statements a little bit more direction, a little more focused, a little less global, a little more direct, but concepts are the same. So what I've done here is boarded out our vision statements and tied them back to the educational blueprint. So, excuse me. Implement safe and supportive schools initiative as outlined by DESI. That obviously ties back to goal of strategic objective number one, support safe schools. And I think we know that the elementary school applied for the Safe and Supportive School Grant, and they actually applied for the second level of that grant. It's been approved. The middle high school applied for the first step in the Safe and Supportive School Grant, and they've actually been approved. So we'll actually have grant funding of both buildings to be working towards implementing these initiatives outlined by DESI for safe and supportive schools. Increase supports for early childhood education. We tie that back to supporting safe schools and enhancing teaching and learning. Develop a career and technical education program at the middle high school. That goes back to engage in the community and enhancing teaching and learning. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about each of these pieces. I'm going to tie them to some positions that we're going to suggest we need to build. And the one that I'm probably going to build out, at least conceptually talk about the most, maybe, might be this concept of a career and technical education program at the middle high school. Increase enrollment in AP courses, which ties back to enhancing teaching and learning. Also ties directly back to our accountability system. We just talked about having to adding, you know, it's, bottom line is they're saying you need to increase your rigor of some of the courses you're offering as part of the accountability system. Increase dual enrollment opportunities. So we had a dual enrollment program here with Cape Cod Community College. It had been grant-funded through Makepeace, and was really actually fairly successful for a couple of years. And then, once the grant funding dried up, the program kind of dried up. And so we'd like to bring back and talk about having that dual enrollment piece. And those dual enrollment courses benefit kids as they transition to college in terms of preparing them. Also has the benefit that it counts towards that accountability system. Any dual enrollment course counts as engaging students in higher-level coursework for those juniors and seniors. Integrate technology to have students explore, design, and create. Goes back to enhancing teaching and learning. And we put, this is here more along the concept of, learning is not about the technology. Technology is a tool. And we want to work with our students to employ the tools that they currently have to do what? To explore, design, and create. That's what we want to see students do with the tools. The tools change. The devices we have sitting in front of us change. You know, five years from now, we may look totally different up here as a board in terms of what we're using, how we're presenting, what we're doing. But it's really about, what, what do you do with those tools? And then obviously, work with the town to maintain current facilities. You know, this community has just put a huge investment facility-wise into the school district. We have a brand-new elementary school. I know everybody knows this, but I'll say it. A brand-new elementary school. We did an accelerated repair project at the middle high school with new windows, doors, boilers. We have a brand-new track and field. And we do have to work with the town to ensure that we're properly maintaining these new facilities we've brought online. That has to be part of our vision, part of what we want to achieve. So, our next step. So what I've done here is taken each of the strategic objectives in the educational blueprint. So I want to keep tying this back to our big-picture vision and say, which one of our, our more narrow statements, where do they align? So enhancing, and then put some positions to it. What would that actually look like in terms of staff in the building? Enhancing teaching and learning. Obviously, this is, this is the biggest thing we do. This is going to be our largest focus area. So increasing supports for early education, developing a career and technical education program at the middle high school, increasing enrollment in AP courses, increasing dual enrollment opportunities, integrating technology. That all falls big picture under teaching, enhancing teaching and learning. And what we'd see, so what we, what we're going to propose is these are positions we think we need to either bring back that have been reduced, or add in the district to try to build this out. A middle high school technology engineering teacher. A middle high school technology integrating teacher specialist. I'll talk about that position a little bit more in a second. The grade five teacher at the elementary school. The six full-time K-Powers. I know, I know that, that that's, right now, we do have six point five K-Powers, so that would go back. The, the grade five, actually, the technology teacher, the grade five teacher and the full-time K-Powers were all budget reductions in our budget reduction cycle two years ago. The technology integration specialist was not, but that's a position we're proposing in terms of our vision for the future. Create an ESL budget line item. The reality is, as I said earlier, two years ago, we had two ESL students or Yale students, and now we have twenty-four. Technically, we don't even have a budget line item in, in the district to support them. In terms of translation services, there's, there's just some realities of things that happen with that. So budgetarily, as we build a budget, we're going to have to build a budget for that, because now it has twenty-four kids. And we're required to service. And the last one, we haven't talked, we can get, we'll get more into the details of this as we get into further budget presentations, but I'll touch on it briefly now. We said real, reallocate some Title I funds to support Tier Three programming. So right now, we, we receive a Title I allotment. It's a grant to support early childhood education in the elementary school. That grant varies in the amount from, we're around one seventy-five this year. But it varies, last couple of years between one seventy-five and a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And really, that grant has been supporting positions. Reading specialists, some paraprofessionals, that all support early childhood education, because they work in the building and they're teachers. We'd like to take some budgetary pieces and try to maybe take some of that funding away from direct positions and actually put it towards support services. Now, for some programming, so some extra tutoring for kids, some special, maybe some more specialized reading. Now, those would be, those things would be carried out by people, you know, there'd be people who would do that. But it would actually, and some of it would be, so we want to try to see if we can take some of those, some of our people out of those positions and put that more towards programming as a budgetary decision. Because ultimately, that's going to support that whole concept of improving early childhood education. Now, what I'm laying out for you here, I'm going to lay out a lot of positions. With, we, we know there's a reality piece here. I think that the positions we put out here, if we were going to estimate values of them, it's probably over a million dollars. So we're not looking for a million-dollar increase next year. But at the end, we're going to make a proposal of, at least a beginning discussion of, these are things we'd like to see happen in the FY twenty budget as a first step. I wanted to talk a little bit more about this engage in the community and the career and technical education program would actually do that. And this is really a redesign. This would be a restructuring of the middle high school program of studies and how we look at programs at the middle high school to say, instead of just taking your general classes of English, Math, Science, and Social Studies, you still take those courses, but maybe tying them into a hospitality, uh, sorry, tying them into a pathway that actually has a service sector in mind of thinking, you know what, I'm, and has some electives behind it to support it. So you'd still take English, Math, Science, and Social Studies, but maybe you'd take some other electives that would support a specific pathway. These, and we have a lot of people in the district who are interested in this concept. We've actually begun to go and look at some other schools. We've set, we've sent teams of teachers to Bourne High School to begin to look at this. We sent teams of teachers to Mashpee High School. Mashpee probably has maybe the most successful CTE program in this, down the Cape South Shore area. And said, how did you start and what kind of pathways do you have? And what it would mean is, so for example, so these are proposed pathway, pathways. We're going to look to build this out over time. And the people taking the lead on this right now at the high school level are Meredith, Mike Schultz, and Janelle Holly. So the three of them are going to kind, they're kind of taking the lead and saying, what do we want this to look like? What's it going to, what's, what do we, come up with a more formalized plan? So this is just conceptually some of the pathways you could have. So hospitality and services. You know, that could tie into our culinary program. And maybe we expand the culinary program and make it more like a restaurant and have more of a specific culinary program. Maybe there's a health and wellness program where students do get a wellness certificate in personal training, which is this, so they work towards some certificates. They take a nutrition course. They take a CPR course. They take an EMT certification training course, which you could offer through a high school. There are high schools that offer EMT certification in their senior year. So you like build those programs in and have that just be a component of the larger structure of English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. And that would be their elective base. And a student in their freshman or sophomore year would say, yeah, that's a pathway I might be interested in moving in that direction. Manufacturing, engineering, technology, you know, could have some woodworking, could have some laser work, drafting, CAD. Could have a robotics piece to it. Could have a programming piece to it. Would probably definitely have a programming piece to it. Business entrepreneurship would be, now, some of these courses we already offer would be like an economics course, an accounting's course, a personal finance course. But tying that into a pathway in terms of, you know, I'm interested, maybe I'm going to run a business. So what's some basic coursework I would need to support that background? Our graphics and visual arts communications pathway, which would just look to enhance our current arts programs in terms of graphic design. And then schools do things, and we actually used to do this. You know, the yearbook would actually become a course, and you'd build the yearbook as part of graphic design. And you'd do those pieces as part of your high school. And, and now, your arts and communications could also just be expanding on the performing arts beyond chorus and band and having some electives in music. Now, all those things, some of this could be achieved by reshuffling what we have. And kind of that's our next level of discussion of, a lot of, a lot of components of this are there. We just need to move them in the right place. And then some of these things are going to take more to build. And that's our thought process on the middle high school technology engineering teacher and the middle high school tech integration specialist or teacher. The districts that have begun to build this program, that's where they started. They hired these, those two positions and kind of had them take the lead in building out the program, even if it wasn't all technology-related. You know, they, even if it was visual arts, even if it was other places. Because your technology integration specialist could be, could be someone who's working with the art program and how you're doing that in arts, and how you're doing that in culinary, and how you're, and so position, schools that have been successful in building this program out, that's what they've said they've started with. So that's why we have that specific recommendation of a technology engineering teacher, a technology integration specialist. I know our math program right now is very interested in, our math department at the high school level, maybe the middle school level too, is interested in programming and, and building out our programming components. We started this year with the Bootstrap, which is a, a beginning coding course. And actually, in December, the Bootstrap class is going to come and make a presentation for the committee about what we've been, what they've been doing in programming. And, and we want to have a next step for that, for the kids who took Bootstrap, take that next level of programming. Then they're eighth graders. We want to have something for them over the next four years, so they can build up their programming education. So that, that's very big picture, and we're going to get into a lot more details on this whole concept of a career and technical education program. But that, that's the basis for those two technology positions that we've been talking about at the middle high school. Next one is support safe schools. So what we tied to that is implement the safe schools initiative. We do have some positions tied to that. Things we've talked about, elementary school adjustment counselor. A health teacher at the middle high school. We do think there would be a value to bringing back a full health program. If we had another health teacher at the middle high school, we'd be able to offer health for all students in grades six through eight. A middle high school guidance counselor. Middle-high school guidance counselor. BCBA assistant, which is a board-certified behavioral analysis assistant, which assists students in managing social-emotional issues. And social coaches at the Carver Elementary School and Middle-high School. The social coaches position, we'll build this out, we'll talk a little bit more about what that actually, those things would look like. The social coaches is a little bit of a restructuring. We'd look to take our lunchroom monitors and give them a little bit more responsibility. It may, the monitor position might be restructured, it may not be our current lunch monitors. And I don't want to get too far into that discussion, because we just get into more personnel. But looking at that concept of having people in the building, schools, especially at the elementary level, we're going to be building social coaches, that work with kids on social stories, really, in essence, in terms of, how do you manage specific behaviors? If you're feeling frustrated in this situation, what do you do to manage that behavior outside of the classroom? Instead of necessarily a teacher having to manage that with 24 kids in a classroom, if a kid's facing a crisis, maybe having some more individual supports. And we can talk more about that as we move into the future. If we want more detail, well, I'll call back to it if we want to get into more detail. And then, the last piece of leverage leadership policy and funding, is work with the town to maintain current facilities. We feel like we need to add at least .4 in terms of town-wide technology support, and another groundskeeper position. We feel like we need another groundskeeper, which helps support the building grounds we have. And we need another technology person. The bottom line, and this is, that's not necessarily town-wide, it is a town-wide position, because technology's town-wide, but, you know, the amount of technology going one-to-one at the middle-high school with 800 Chromebooks, just creates a lot of stress on the technology department in terms of managing those Chromebooks and fixing them, and the insurance piece, and there's a lot of pieces there. We say, we just probably, we need another tech person. Not necessarily a teacher, but someone to work the devices. So, if we were going to make this into an FY '20 request and put some numbers to it, which is the next page, is, we would say FY '20 request would be, the technology teacher and technology integration specialist at the middle-high school, increasing the, creating ESL budget, we just feel like that's something that needs to happen. Add a behavioral assistant at the elementary school. Add the social coaches restructuring the four current monitors at the elementary school. Taking some of that Title I Tier III supports for $25,000 of the current Title I funding, which is around $175, and then adding the town-wide technology support and the town-wide groundskeeper. Now, those two last two would follow the town-wide positions for groundskeeper and technology support. Now, obviously, these are just estimates in terms of numbers, but that's, that's kind of our beginning piece in terms of where we're looking to go. Now, this is going to build out over time. This is, it's November, and we're building towards maybe, you know, eventually our approval of a budget in March. But we wanted to begin the discussion with the committee, and where we want to see ourselves go, and where we're thinking we need to go. And I think that, you know, there's a, there's a lot of positions that are listed out there, but I think this would be a good starting point. And I think that it supports our four key strategic objectives, going back to that beginning, of supporting safe schools, engaging the community, enhancing teaching and learning, and leveraging leadership policy and funding, and trying to maybe build a little vision of where we want to go, specifically at the middle-high school with kind of that redesign of creating a career in technology pathway for students. So that, that's kind of, that's, that's the overview. So I guess at this time, I would take any questions people had as a beginning point, and saying that this is a beginning point of trying to lay out what direction we want to go in.
All right, I'll go first. Thank you for the bird's-eye view on this, and I know that we're not diving into anything tonight, that's not what this is about. The only thing I would ask is, maybe going forward, the only thing on my end that I would like to see is the pathways. If, and I know this is a starting point, so then you're building out a one, three, and a five type of vision. So when that is discussed by Janelle, Mike, or Meredith, if they could break that out and show me kind of what that's, what that vision looks like.
And that, one of the things they're going to take on is actually building a specific plan to support this over time, which we obviously would have to present to the committee. And some of the districts have done this, have gone after a range of grant funding as well. So Meredith and Mike and Janelle are actually beginning to look at what are grant opportunities that other districts have been taking advantage of, to try to support this financially.
Okay. So as long as that's a plan going forward, I'd definitely like to see that. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Oh, I'm, sorry. Thank you. I think it looks great. I think it's very exciting. I echo what Andrew said. Looking forward to learning more about it, and doing what we can to get the funding that we need for it, to make it happen. So, thank you for putting it together. It's a great, looks like a great pathway and a great vision, so it's exciting. Thank you.
I'd like to see that we're putting back things that we thought were important a few years ago, some programs, some positions, and actually looking at the, you know, 10,000-mile mark, or foot mark, I mean, at the, from the bird's-eye view, like Andrew said. And it'll be interesting to see the process that we have to go through to make it a reality. But I think, thank you for putting it together and your team.
So I have two quick questions. The ESL budget line item, is there, what are, how is our dispersment with that? Is there a possibility of having 20 students in one building at a time? Or we, I mean, we went from two to 24, so anything's possible, but...
Yeah, I think, I think if we, if we stay on that level of growth, yes, there's a chance that we're going to meet the number in terms of...
But that's a position, then. If, don't we have a population we have to meet?
So right now, we do have a full-time ESL teacher at the elementary school. And we add the .5 ESL teacher at the middle-high school. I mean, if we're going to continue that growth, that's not in here, but we probably have to consider that, we'll probably have to end up having a full-time position at the middle-high school as well. So that probably has to get built in here in terms of, so we feel like right now at 24, those two people can manage that position. But if our growth continues that way, we'll probably have to add.
So the other, the other question, or maybe a comment, depending on where you're going with this, is, I mean, I think it's hard to prioritize any one of these over another. We need all of them. But I know, no matter where we're going with our pathway, if we're not starting on the right path, it makes everything difficult. And I guess I have a concern particularly with the, with the K-Pairs, and them not necessarily having the support that they need at that early level, where it's extremely important to get the kids going in the right way, so...
Having that be in the first year.
What's that?
Having that be in the first year.
Well, I guess, I, you know, I find that to be an important piece, that I think should be part of that. I'm not sure how that could fit in, or where that would fit in. But to me, I know early literacy is the backbone of everything of where you're moving them, so if we're not really getting them at that time the way we need to, and I can't imagine, I mean, so that, does that mean right now, there's a parrot in the classroom for half the day, and then the second half of the day, they're all by themselves?
Right.
That's, that's pretty intense for a kindergarten classroom, for the expectations that they have at that level. So I guess I would just have a concern with, with that not maybe being prioritized. But again, I, you know, let's see how we go through this process, but, because it'd be hard to pick one over the other at any point. But I just, to me, that's a, that's a really, really important part of education, that if we're not really hitting that mark, no matter what pathway we create, we're looking at some difficult situations.
Yep. We will definitely take that into consideration.
Anyone else, anything else? All right, then. Thank you, gentlemen, for all of this. And by the way, just to add on to that, we have not met with this selectmen again. We met that time that we have spoken about, but we were kind of waiting till this presentation went on, and we will attend a meeting with them again, and continue to push our need and our point, and what we're looking for, so...
I've actually was in contact with the town administrative table, trying to pick a day that might work prior to Thanksgiving.
Yes, excellent.
So in the next couple of weeks.
Let me know what you hear.
All right. All right, we have one more agenda item. So moving on to recommendations from the superintendent. We have a new policy proposal for this evening. So it's a proposed revision of our advertising policy, policy KHB. The policy subcommittee asked me to bring forward a revision to that advertising policy. This would be the first reading of the policy that would allow advertising on school property and grounds. No action is required on the item at this meeting. We'll bring it back for a second reading in December. So I have the original policy for you and the proposed revision. We'll look at the proposed revision, basically, the proposed revision says, our critical policy says, we cannot advertising, we cannot advertise on fields and grounds. This would change that by saying, advertising on commercial products, sorry, advertising of commercial products or services will be permitted in school buildings, and on school grounds at the discretion of the superintendent. And then after that, it's actually the same policy as before. This publication of the school system will not contain any advertising. However, this will not prevent advertising in student publications, such as the yearbook, either published by student organizations, subject to administrative controls, or the use of commercially-sponsored free teaching aids if the content is approved by the administration. Solicitation of sales or the use of names of school system with a product will not be permitted by the principal and/or superintendent. So this is really, this opens up that concept of, would you allow some advertising on our field spaces? So an approval of this policy would allow us to consider advertising in our field spaces. And we, you know, I know the committee's talked about that a little bit, so I wanted to bring that policy forward tonight, and open it up for comments or concerns, again, with this just being our first reading, and then we'll bring it back in December.
I, with no disrespect to you, I guess I, my only concern that I might have is with the, at the discretion of the superintendent. I don't know if maybe that's something that the school committee would be part of, or, I mean, I don't know. Because again, no disrespect to you, that doesn't mean you're always the one in that position. It might be odd to show up, and what kind of advertising are you going to see out there, you know?
I agree. And also, if this was approved, well, this could be a separate policy, maybe, do we want to have a general, a uniform design, or do we just, you know, of what the advertising signs look like?
Like, turn us into a planning board, Andy?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, I know, some fields, they do, like, we just spoke to Scott about before, they do just a straight color, you know, like a green and white, maroon and white, and they have the business name. Then other ones have the big, full-color logo and stuff.
My sense is the policy would allow us to establish some regulations, in terms of how the policy would be implemented, which we could establish if people, if the committee felt strongly about having some general regulations of, you know, what we'd want the signage to look like.
Yeah, I would, I would rather see either some kind of combination of decision made, or some sort of regulation put into place on how that goes. I'd be comfortable either way, I think.
We can look at the wording of approval of the superintendent, and come back with a different suggestion on that.
And like, also, the commercial products, I mean, what if we have a dispensary open in town, and they want to advertise? Right? I mean, it's a possibility, so...
Yeah, but it all goes back to the approval of the committee. The committee, someone would have to approve what goes out, whether it's the committee or the...
Yeah, do you want to discuss, like, putting, you know, obviously, it's going to be, right, school-appropriate, clearly, we're not going to do anything that is inappropriate.
Right, you're advertising on school grounds, so the school already has established policies and regulations on certain things, and that would be a violation of those policies, so, I mean, I think that...
Just like, I just like the advertising piece of it, though. Clearly, you can't vape, and you can't jewel, and all those things, but just, just my thought.
Yep, yep. Any other thoughts on this policy?
I've been in favor of the policy change for a long time. I think with the new field, it's definitely needed, and it's a way to bring in some possible revenue, so I definitely want to do it. And changing some verbiage is fine.
Yeah, and I do, I do think, the general sense of the committee has been that, we need to at least investigate any revenue sources that we can, and this is another opportunity to look at ways to bring revenue to the school district, by allowing some commercial advertising on some of the field spaces.
And when we bring it up, Scott, so now, now it's in this form, would the next thing be, you'd have to have a committee that would go over how to go about putting this thing forward? How does that work? I'm just curious. Like, what I'm saying is, if we had approved this next meeting, and somebody gives you a call 48 hours later...
Says, I want to advertise here.
Right. I mean, so what are you doing? Are you just taking that and going, okay, sounds great?
Well, but that's where I think either a joint discussion, or some sense of regulation has to be in place in order for that to occur, because, you know, yes, we want to find revenue sources, but at what cost? And where is that line drawn? And what position do you put him in, where he's saying yes to them and no to them, in the legality of that? So I think we just need to be clear with the language before we...
Definitely. Because then, there's the other question, is where's the revenue go? If, you know, if somebody just called you directly, does it go to the Booster Club? Does it go to the, where does it go?
Oh, I think the revenue goes to, goes to the school department.
Okay. Well, I think that's stuff to talk about. I mean, there's a lot of "I thinks," and I just want to have it clearly buttoned up, so we would, you know, know where everything's being, being placed. So I think this is a great step forward. I think it will be obviously something we're going to do, but I think it's just something we probably need to button up a little bit. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
All right, AFLs?
So from there, we move on to reports from the school committee.
I can start, I'll start, I'll handle the sports end of it. I know that in the next 24 to 48 hours, we've got the field hockey team, we have the soccer team, playing in the next round of their tournament, the boy soccer team. So we all are wishing them luck, and we won't speak again before Thanksgiving, so we wish the football team best of luck against Middleboro. That'll be on the new, the new field, and it should be a great experience.
So the soccer team plays at home tomorrow at 6 o'clock.
Against West Bridgewater, yeah.
At West Bridgewater. And then, we are actually part of our new field. We're hosting the sectional semifinals for soccer. And you declared that neutral site prior to the start of the tournament, so if your team happens to make it, they get to play at home. So if Carver wins on Tuesday night, they will play at home in the sectional semifinals, which is technically a neutral site. So we'll be hosting both sectional semifinal games in Carver on Thursday evening. So even if the boys lose on Tuesday night, you can come out and see some great soccer from four other towns, playing in our new facility on Thursday evening. And the girls play at Tarn High School at 5:00 on Wednesday for field hockey.
Yeah, the field hockey team.
Yeah, so girls, field hockey play, well, our co-ed field hockey team, so there's girls and guys around our field hockey team. So sorry about that slip of saying just girls. So there's girls, it is a co-ed team, play Wednesday evening, 5:00, Tarn High School, and they are in the, they are in the semifinals. So Tarn is the neutral site for the semifinals for field hockey.
Stephanie?
Yeah, I was like copiously making, making notes of all the sporting events, because I know it's the first time, right, in the, in the field hockey team's history that they've made it.
That they made it to the semifinals.
Right, to the sectional semifinals. So I just want to say, congratulations to everyone, and, you know, best of luck to all of our teams. Again, we're not going to be meeting until December, which is just inconceivable that this year is flying by so fast. Before Thanksgiving, we have Veterans Day coming up, so I just want to say, thank you to everyone that has served, that is serving. I know we have a very large veteran community in Carver. And there are events coming up, I do believe, this weekend. I don't have the details, but Cranberry Village is having a breakfast, South Meadow Village had their lunch in this past weekend, I was able to go, it was wonderful. Always great to get out there in the community and participate in something to honor our veterans.
And the elementary school always does an elementary, always does a veteran celebration, so that is this week, that is Friday.
Friday, right.
So they're doing a veterans' breakfast on Friday morning, something Ruby's passionate about. Ruby doesn't like to talk about it a lot, we give a lot of Ruby a lot of props, because she was, for her Spanish speaking earlier in the meeting, Ruby was also a veteran, so she did, she did serve. So she, the elementary school always has a very nice Veterans Day ceremony.
They do, absolutely. And then, the Carver Athletic Boosters have their Fall Social coming up on November 17th. I want to give them a plug. It's at Cabbie Shack, it's a 21-plus event, it's $10 to get into the door, it's from 8 p.m. They have lots of raffles, it's a great fundraiser, it's a fun time. And happy Thanksgiving, and everyone, please stay safe, and please, please, given the events and the news lately, do not drive around school buses. I know it's frustrating to get stuck behind them sometimes, but please, just be patient. And that's that.
Short and sweet for me. Happy Veterans Day, thank you, veterans, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Sweet.
Tomorrow's a, tomorrow's a big day, man, Andy, I thought you were going to throw something out there.
I'm tired of politics.
Right, just vote.
I can't wait till the, for the ads to end.
Your voice is always important, and there's a lot of issues right now that are dependent upon what happens tomorrow, so regardless of who you're going for, just get out and